Alrighty, I'm gonna call the Lysander Town Board meeting to order. I'm Bob Durasi, I'm the Deputy Supervisor. Supervisor Wicks is out of town. He had a death in the family. And our condolences are with him and his family, as well as Jeff, with him and his family losing his dad. So I'll chair the meeting tonight, and if I don't do too good, just kick me out of office or something. So we'll get up and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance). The flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
If I could, can I get a motion to adopt the minutes from the last meeting? I'll move it.
I'll say.
Any discussion, any changes? If not, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're gonna do citizens' comments, and if one of the subjects may be out there, I don't know for sure, it might be tax assessments and what they're doing, but tonight we have Teresa Golden, our Tax Assessor here. And so what I'd like to do, and it's totally up to you, is to, if there are any other comments that have nothing to do with tax assessments, come up and talk about them. But what we'll allow during the Department Head Report Number Seven, when Teresa Golden makes her report, I'd like to allow some, or entertain questions at that point. And they will be, hopefully, just, you know, what's the answer to this question? And Mrs. Golden has a bunch of questions that have come into the town already. She was gonna go through them and hopefully explain this whole process, which may not be as complicated as some of us may think, and I hope so. With that, anybody who has any comments, come on up to the microphone.
Hi, Bob.
Rob?
Alright, I'm Rob Helfrich, 349 Hourglass Lane. And since the Life Worth Living 5K is on the docket tonight, I thought it might be a good opportunity to kind of explain what we've been doing in the community and what the need actually is. So I'm just gonna take a couple of minutes, if that's alright, and talk about that. Alright, so we started the Zach Helfrich Memorial Fund about three years ago, and his mission is really to raise awareness of suicide, suicide prevention, especially among young people, and also fund effective treatment programs in CNY. Right now, we started an endowment last year. We raised enough money to start the endowment. And the endowment's to support Upstate's psychiatry high-risk program. That program is incredibly effective, and it treats youth between ages of 14 all the way up to young people to 40 years old. It's getting some national recognition. They've treated over 400 patients, high-risk patients. These patients are multiple-tempered patients. They have not lost one patient to suicide. Extremely effective. So that's where we're putting a lot of the money that we're raising for these events. And the need is astronomical. The CBC just came out with a study about a month ago, and one specific statistic really kind of caught my eye. The study was studying children, high schoolers, teenagers between 2009 to 2019. They determined, and this is pre-pandemic, that in 2019, 9% of high school students attempted suicide. This is pre-pandemic. Now, pandemic, things have been really bad. Kids have been isolated, they're getting depressed, it's a real issue. It's probably greater than 10%. That means that in a classroom of 20 kids, in a year, two of those kids more than likely attempted. There have been several recent teen suicides in CNY. Recently, you might have noticed on the news, two weeks ago, there's a 15-year-old in Fayetteville who had taken his life. There have been at least three at CNS, and there have been two recently in the morning. There was a suicide here in Baldweswell. There was a high school senior that took his life back in October. So what we've been doing, we do a lot more than just the 5K. We actually have three large events in Baldweswell. We have the 5K that we're gonna talk about tonight. We also do a golf, the second year for a golf tournament over in Foxfire. And then we also have, we do a birthday party for Zach over at WT Brew's. That actually has done very, very well. To date, we've raised approximately $45,000. And just kind of put that in comparison with some other charities here in Lysander. Seneca River Day's been around for 20 years, saving about $25,000 on their event. The Big Chill Race is about 15. We're not the largest, but I think we're growing the fastest. And last year we did 15, this year I'm looking to do at least 20 gross on just that one event. A couple of quick details about the event. The most impactful part of the course is what we call the Memorial Orchard. We have through the, at Abbott Farms, in the Orchard, we have over 40 memorials of loved ones, local, either committed, either suicide victims locally or have loved ones within the community. We will again have two deputies on Hicks Road. I know that was an issue. We pay for those deputies, they're not free. We contract with them, we pay for that service. There will be two deputies there on Hicks Road. If not, they better be there, because it's a service we're paying for, it's not free. The event is also sanctioned by the USA Track and Field. This is important. I have to abide by their safety protocols. The USATF is a national sanctioning body for running events, anything from community 5Ks to high schools and Olympic qualifiers. As a race director, I'm required to do eight hours of mandatory training every year to get that sanctioned. The Life Worth Living 5K is only one of three sanctioned events by the USATF here in CNY. The other two is the Syracuse Half and the Shamrock Run. Not the Earth Day Half or Paige's Butterfly Run. So we're kind of like at a sanctioning perspective at a higher level from safety protocols. There's ways you can help. You know, perhaps I can parse some orange colors from the Highway Department this year? If not, that's okay, I get them from Mike Samurai, but they're getting kind of a little bit more in there, aren't they? Mine's a Kevin Cannon case. And volunteering opportunities. We can use parking help, traffic, horse stewards, border stations, and perfect for town councilors, handing out medals at the finish line. So there's a way to do that. I'm just gonna hand these out to you. You just go to the Run Sign Up tab at the bottom, and you'll see a volunteer tab.
What about donations? If someone can't make the 5K and they'd like to donate?
You can donate right through that Run Sign Up website. There's a donate button.
Thank you.
And... I don't wanna take much more time here. And here's, I'm gonna leave these right here. This is the Upstate program, if anyone's interested in learning more. I'll leave these with Diane. And also, this is the cards for our golf tournament as well. So it's a really, it's an incredibly important cause, and I think it's even more important now, more than ever, because we have been losing kids. And I really think we're gonna lose more. And the bottom line with awareness, parents need to know that this is a reality, that this can happen. It's hard to actually conceptualize that your child making suicide, but it's a reality and it could happen. Kids need to understand the need to reach out. They need to talk to somebody. If they're feeling sad, depressed, they need to talk to their parents or their friends. They need to talk to somebody. And that's the most important thing that we're doing as far as raising awareness. And the other half of that obviously is raising money for this program at Upstate. Thanks.
Rob, I have to say, and I know I'm speaking for everybody, what you're doing is, it's beyond commendable, so I appreciate all that you do for this community in this respect, and this one is really serious.
Yeah, it is, unfortunately it's gonna be worse.
And it's what makes, and we all know this, it's what makes Lysander and Baldweswell such a special place, that we've got folks like you doing this, so thank you.
It's a labor glove.
Yep.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else?
It may sound like a little bit of a babble, I'm just gonna come up here and maybe try to lay a little foundation for what I wanna say, maybe a little bit when Number Seven comes up. Because I don't know, I probably won't have enough time then, you know? But anyways, it has to do with our town. And I'm actually old enough, I was born in this township, I'm actually old enough to have been here, going on close to six decades now. So I've kind of got a feel of where our town is now, where it used to be, you know, how it's come along. And we have a great town, and a lot of people in the town may have only been here a few years or so and don't have that perspective. But if you don't happen to, if you're that person who, you know, is watching at home or sitting on the board, if you ever have an opportunity to drive around with a relative or somebody who's been here 60, 70 years, and listen to them talk while you're driving around about the way things are now and the way things used to be, I think it puts things into perspective a little bit. And that's something I would implore, you know, on all you guys to do. Like when I grew up, I can remember this town being 10 and a half, 11,000 people. I don't know what the official figure is now, but I think 25,000 or so.
I think a little bit less, but around in the 20s.
And so my thought process has always been, as you're growing a town, you know, what you hope to assume with that is, one, you can bring in more monies to do other things, but also you can have more people to share amongst the cost that the town has. And, you know, I've seen our town grow and grow and grow throughout my lifetime, and a lot of people that I know and help out in my community in one way or the other, or they're bringing groceries in or plowing the drug or whatever, I've seen in their eyes maybe a loss of a quality of life. And that may be in that they used to be able to drive in our own township and go to a grocery store. Or they used to go down into the village and do business without having to wait 15 minutes to pull out of one business, rush to get into traffic and hope they can make it. And so I'll kind of stop it there, but the point I'm trying to make is, is we've grown our town. A lot of things, like the school district, have grown from that. Cost of living has grown from that. Not sure that our town is getting the trade-off in quality of life is all, and that's just something I would hope that you guys would think about, and I'd like the opportunity to talk with you one-on-one about some specific things, if any of you ever had the chance.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
Cindy Clark, 27, West Shinsay. Fred, while I appreciate what you said today, I grew up here too, I'm older than you. And I watched the progress, the good, the bad, the ugly, for many, many years. My family is from here, so I've watched it too. I remember, and I'm sure you probably remember, back in the 70s, late 60s, early 70s, there was nothing in this town, nothing in this village. And there were empty storefronts, dusty, nothing. There was nothing-
Address the board.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
This is not between you and Fred.
I know, I'm sorry. There wasn't anything here, really. There was nothing to attract, to keep people here. This is, I grew up, this is where I graduated around that time. It was, it reminded me of movies that you saw of Detroit. So to say that things maybe have not gotten better, it all is, it's in your perspective what's better, what you feel is quality of life for you. I love it here. I think we have more to do now than we ever did, as far as the community, there's more to be offered. I've had friends in other areas, in Liverpool, say for example, that come here and they go, "I can't believe what this community has to be offered." You know, your Taste of Beville, Margarita Fest, you know, all of these things. They have nothing like that where they are. Not that this is perfect here. And I liked, you know, I liked it when it was smaller, you know, you could grow up, you could ride in the back of a pickup truck with a few bales of hay on the back of it. And they had the big, the drinking fountain in the middle of the village. You know, I remember all of that, and I'm nostalgic for all that too. But I think as far as a quality of life and a good place to live, talk to people in other areas around here to see what they think. And I think our area is, you know, we have to work all sides of it. We have to work with the taxes and services that you can provide, and, you know, your law enforcement. It's a balancing act all over. But I do feel that overall, this community continues to improve, its quality of life for all of us. And like I say, it all depends on what you want. As far as for what myself and my family, a lot of my friends, we love this community, we love what he has to offer. It's not the cheapest place to live, it's not the best place to live, as far as maybe, I don't know, skiing or something, you know, like that. But for me, and for a lot of us that have lived here and made this our home, it is absolutely the best place to live. So, thank you.
Then we will close the citizen comment portion of the meeting, and we'll move on to town board comments, and Mr. Moore will start with you.
Thanks for coming up to the mic, everyone who came up so far. I've only been here for 30, 35 years, Fred, sorry. But what I can say, you know, when I was a kid, I wasn't here, but I was riding in the back of pickup trucks. Wherever you lived didn't change, didn't change whether you could or couldn't ride in the back of a pickup truck. Same with the cost of living. But I would say Central New York is a pretty good value, wherever you are. We just happen to live in the best community, right?
Right.
One of the other things that makes our community great is our volunteers. People who paid attention through the years here would also know that I've been volunteering for the whole time that I've been in this community. So, and I mention very often the good work that volunteers do in our community. We do live in a great place, and I think all three of you are saying that, so thank you. And other than that, I'm just gonna stick to it.
Mr. Kudrow?
I'll stick to the agenda tonight.
Mr. Rowe?
Thanks for everybody coming out. I have nothing else at this time, just stick to the agenda and wait this assessor's report.
And I just have, thank you, Kevin. I just have a quick announcement. I learned this last night from an Onondaga County employee that works in the County Executive's Office. So on April, this is for the benefit of everybody, on April 18th, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m., there's actually gonna be a job opening fair at the ON Center. Apparently, Onondaga County has a lot of positions they need to fill. So April 18th, 1:00 to 6:00 p.m., ON Center job openings. In addition to that, there are a number of positions available for young folks, for summer jobs. And you have to be 18 and older to work for the County Parks Department and DOT, and 17 or older for any of the other jobs. I don't have a list of those jobs. So if anybody's interested or listening to me on PAC-BTV, just call Onondaga County, probably the County Executive's Office or the county personnel, and they'll likely give you some more information. So other than that, we'll stick to the agenda. What we'll do now is go to the Department Head Reports. We're gonna save the best for last, Teresa Golden. So we'll start with you, Al, Town Engineer, if you have anything.
Anybody that lives in the Seneca State neighborhood, you probably already noticed that there's some construction going on. Just be patient, follow the directions of the people directing traffic, and should be wrapped up by the middle of next week.
Agreed. Ken, Highway? We'll talk about the highway plan when we come to that, but anything else?
Just continue to call us, and we'll put you on the lawn fix list, and please be patient, because dirt is still mud right now, but we will get to it.
Agreed. Dean, our Town Clerk?
I'm all set for the evening, thank you.
You're all set for the evening. Tony?
I am not.
Okay, Kevin with Parks?
Staff's back on board, getting the parks slowly cleaned up and straightened up from winter. It's already starting to look pretty good. We'll be, we'll have evening and weekend staff on in a week and a half, Monday right after Easter. So, and at that point, bathrooms will be open throughout the day, weekend, and the evenings. If anyone talks at that point, it will be fully open.
Super? I think what I'll do now is I will introduce Mrs. Golden, Teresa Golden, who is our shared Tax Assessor with the Town of Van Buren. I'll make a very brief opening statement about tax assessments or house assessments that go up, when they do go up. I think the biggest reaction, or the normal reaction for folks is, "Oh my goodness, my taxes are gonna go up." That's not exactly true. In fact, it's, your tax assessment going up has hardly anything to do with your taxes going up. And why would I say something that sounds so counterintuitive? What you really gotta look at, in this case, is the town budget. And I'm gonna just use round numbers, but if the town budget in 2022 is $5 million, and it's a little bit higher than that, we look at the assessed value at all the houses, we apply a tax rate to get to that $5 million. If next year our budget is $5 million, with the exception of maybe some marginal inflationary costs that have increased, you know, gasoline, things like that, and your assessment goes up, we have to lower your assessment. And not your value, your assessed value goes up, we have to lower your assessment, because we don't wanna bring in-
Tax rate.
Tax rate, tax rate. Because we don't, thank you. We don't wanna bring in more than $5 million, because all we need is $5 million. So that's the, kind of the overview, and I know Teresa Golden has a much better way of saying that than I do, but I'll turn it over to you, Teresa.
Okay. Well, prior to the meeting, Supervisor Wicks has presented me with three questions that he wanted me to address, so I will start with that, and then I'll provide a little more detail as we go along. The three questions that I got, number one, is there a state law that the town assessor has to reassess properties every year? And if so, what is the law in this section? In New York State, some states, it is the law that everyone has to be assessed at 100%, which means you would have to adjust your assessment if market value changed. In New York State, it does not say that. What it says is that everyone has to be assessed at the same level or percentage of value. And it is actually from Real Property Tax Law, Section 305, and it basically says that all real property in each assessing unit shall be assessed at a uniform percentage of value, which can be 100% of value, like the Town of Lysander, or it can be a fractional assessment, but they all must be at that same percentage of value. So what that means is, the new houses in the town, the new houses in the area, if we assess them at 100%, we have to assess everyone at 100%. If we assess, if we weren't doing reassessments and our assessments were at 50%, then everyone should be at 50%. And that includes commercial properties, vacant land, and our utility properties. So question number two, is there a law, if there is a law, does the law include a formula? And if so, what is the formula to decide what your house is assessed at? So we've talked about the same percentage of value. And how do you come up with the value? Sales to assessments. That's what we've been doing in the Town of Lysander for approximately 22 years. We compare the sales to the assessments, and if they're within 5%, we look every year, nothing happens. If, like this year, market values have gone up and our assessments are not within 5%, then that triggers a reevaluation for everyone. For residential properties and vacant land, it's simple, it's sales to assessments. And for commercial properties, it's sales to assessments, but then we also look at their income. Commercial properties can bring their income in for us to look at. Why do other towns that do not reassess every year, and some towns haven't assessed in several years? That is a choice that's made by their governing bodies, their town boards, and because of that requirement, not requiring 100%, they assess at a fraction. So there is no requirement, but they should be at the same percentage of market value. And because they're not at market value, the state sets equalization rates. And those equalization rates are used to proportion your county or your school taxes across municipalities that are not assessed at the same level. So reassessments. The handouts are in the back of the room, there's extra copies if you wanna take them. Property owners that aren't here tonight that would like them, they will be available in the assessor's office. I'm not gonna read the whole three pages, I'm gonna hit the high points, and explain, try to explain what the ramifications are when we do reassessments, what the ramifications are if we don't. So reassessments, municipal-wide reassessments are the best way to ensure that assessments are fair and accurate. They are based on 100% of market value. Reassessments ensure you only pay your fair share of taxes, and there's an example of how that works. And conducting a reassessment does not mean that your assessment of your taxes will automatically increase. Your taxes may increase, decrease, or stay the same. And that has to do with who's been reassessed, how many people have been reassessed, how much value has been added, but also that levy or that budget, what are they spending? That has more to do with what you're paying than your assessment. Reassessments don't increase the amount of taxes that need to be collected by the local government. That was stated by the Deputy Supervisor. If we have a budget of $5 million, it's illegal for us to collect more than that. So if the taxable value goes up and the budget stays the same, the rates go down and nothing changes. An analogy, if the total amount of taxes collected is a pie, and that's for school, district, county, or town, the size of the pie is determined by city councils, town boards, school boards, and the county legislatures. The assessor doesn't impact the size of the pie, he or she just ensures that the pie is cut up fairly and that taxes are fairly distributed based on the current market values. And the state, basically, because of all those reasons, encourages municipalities to conduct frequent reassessments, which is what the Town of Lysander has made the commitment to do for the past 22 years. In addition to that, because we are maintaining our assessment rule, the town does not have to hire an outside contractor 15 or 20 years down the road to bring an assessment, a fractional assessment town up to full value, which costs a lot of money, and that's actually tax-bear money. So equalization rates. So if we don't reassess, and we don't keep our level of assessment at 100%, then the state steps in, and they do equalization rates, because everyone has to be on the same level, even though their levels of assessments may not be equal. So total assessed value of a municipality, that is based on the assessments of everyone, divided by the total market value of the same municipality equals your equalization rate. So basically, what the state does is they calculate what the full value of a town that's not assessing at full value is, and that's divided into their assessment to get the equalization rate. Equalization rates of 100%, most likely a reassessment was conducted in recent years. Equalization rates less than 100%, the lower the equalization rate, the longer it has probably been since the last reassessment, and we talked about this last summer when we were, I was going through this with the board. Equalization rates greater than 100%, property values may have decreased since the last reassessment, but assessments were not adjusted downward, they just stayed the same. Each municipality determines its own level of assessment, and this is in contrast to most states that require one level of assessment statewide. That's why we need the equalization rate, so that everyone is on the same playing field. In order to distribute school taxes or county taxes among municipalities, the level of assessment in each municipality must be equalized to full market value, so everyone is on the same plane. Equalization rates, and this is very important, equalization rates do not correct unfair assessments within a municipality, because they're not looking at an individual assessment, they're looking at the town as a whole. And a couple of the things that happen if you don't, you're not at full value, determination, equalization rates are used in determination of ceiling, railroad, agricultural values, and exemptions, which also includes our STAR exemption. So basically, that means if you want a full-value exemption, you have to be at full value, otherwise the state's gonna prorate that based on your level of assessment. So what I have, the other, those were the two handouts in the back. The third handout is actually from the Onondaga County website. It's tax rate books that tell us what the tax rates have done in areas that are the Town of Lysander, Onondaga County. And I use the Town of Clay, which is our neighbor, and they have not done a reassessment in a number of years, and they are currently assessing at 3-point-something percent. And I use the Town of Clay for a specific reason, they share a county, they're our neighbor, and we also share the Bald- They share a county, they're our neighbor, and we also share the Baldensville School District, which is not everyone's school district in the town of Lysander, but the majority of our properties are in the Baldensville School District. So the town of Clay actually has properties in that school district, so that we're talking about the same budget, and there's nothing, no other moving parts to the equation. So I went back to 2010 to 2011, and the handouts are there. The county tax rate in 2011 for the town of Clay outside the village, and this is not the Clay rate, it's the county rate, was $115.26. That's outside the village, okay?
Which handout are you looking at?
I'm looking at the tax rates, this one, okay? So that's the town of Clay rate in 2011, which is based on the 2010 assessment rule. The county tax rate for 2011 for the town of Lysander outside the village, so we're looking at the same equation, it was $6.13. Lysander was at 100%, Clay was at whatever the equalization rate was back then. So then we move to the school district rates. Baldensville School District for 2010, 2011, in the town of Clay, their tax rate was $527.51, and these rates are per thousand, okay? The Baldensville School District tax rate for 2010 and 11 in the town of Lysander was, and it cut off some of the copies, but it circled up above, was $22.78, okay, at 100%. So then we move to see what has happened over roughly 10 years to those rates as the town of Lysander has remained at 100%. And the town of Clay, the equalization rate keeps dropping because they're not changing their assessments. So the town of Clay county tax rate for 2022 went up to $135.26, and that's the same rate outside the village. So their tax rate for the county went up $20 in roughly a 10-year timeframe. Their assessments didn't change, but their tax bills went up because their tax rate went up. The town of Lysander, the county tax rate for 2022 actually was $4.94, which is actually $1.19 less than it was when we started, and it's the same rate outside the village. The Baldensville School District for 2021 and 2022, the town of Clay tax rate went up to $605.07, which is an increase of $77.56 per thousand. In the same timeframe, the town of Lysander's rate went down by 58 cents. So what that tells you and what I'm trying to illustrate, and the last page actually shows you what the, from the county website, what the equalization rates were for 2022, the town of Lysander being at 100% and the town of Clay being at 3.67%. And what I'm trying to illustrate to you is, if we do not do reassessments in the town of Lysander, if we decide that we do not want to maintain those assessments at fair value or 100% of value, then the state will step in and calculate our market value, and they will divide that market value into our current assessments, and we will get an equalization rate that we have very little control over. This is all done by the state. And then instead of having tax rates that remain stable or in some cases go down, we're going to have tax rates that change and go up, which results in a higher tax bill, even though assessments haven't changed. The other negative for not maintaining assessments at full value is the fact that every year that you do a reassessment, the state of New York knows, I have to notify them of the town's intentions in the fall of the year before the assessment rule is filed, and they do our new utility values. So, you know, National Grid, all of our utilities that have expanded, we get new, brand-new, full-market-value utility values every single year because we are updating the assessments. If we don't update our assessments and we decide to, you know, let them stay the same, we don't get those utility values every year. They do them in a periodic schedule, and I believe it's every six years. So if National Grid actually adds things, we don't catch up for it until the next time they do that reevaluation. Also, because the special franchises, our utilities, and our railroad values are all distributed and calculated by the state, they are produced at full value. If the town of Lysander is not at full value, then by law, I have to use the equalization rate to reduce all of those assessments, because if the residential properties in the town are not at full value, the utility properties in the town have to be at that same level of assessment, that same percentage of value.
Thank you very much. And the only editorial comment that I would make is, just as a homeowner, you have to have a criterion for how to put everybody on the same, on the playing field equally, and that's what full value does. There's no arbitrariness to it. Basically, we're all treated the same. This is what your house is worth. The only thing I would add to, and I want Teresa to back me up on that, is it's the old adage, you can't judge a book by its cover. Well, what would I mean by saying that? Teresa's team, herself and her team, you know, they're looking at houses. They're looking at the outside of a house, what the yard looks like, what the neighborhood looks like. If you've got something inside that house that is not right, your cellar floods, you haven't improved, you haven't renovated the house in 50 years, there's something wrong with the house, that's what the grievance process is all about, to say that my house may look from the outside this, but let me tell you what's going on on the inside, or some other mitigating factors that might change the assessment. And I believe in that sense, your office is very fair in listening to me about that.
Yes. We actually, most people do not realize, the preliminary change of assessment notices that were sent out for the town of Van Buren and the town of Lysander are the only preliminary assessment notices that are sent out in the entire county. All of the other assessors in Anadaga County send out tentative notices when their assessments are already on the roll. So a preliminary notice is an option. By law, we have to notify you, so we have two different options. Lysander and Van Buren are the only towns that send out preliminary notices, which allow property owners time to come in and talk to the assessor and share information prior to that tentative role in that tentative assessment. And then if you're not happy, you still have the option to go to the Board of Assessment Review on Grievance Day. In the other towns, you will be asked to sign a stipulation, because your assessment is already on the tentative roll. And you will present your information to the assessor, and they do a very limited number typically, and you present your information to the assessor, and the assessor says, okay, reviews it, gets back to you and says, okay, I like your information, I see your point, this is what I can lower your assessment to. And at that point, you either sign the stipulation and accept that value, or you take the full value, the unchanged value, and you go to the Board of Assessment Review. There isn't an additional option. In Lysander and Van Buren, there is an additional option. And I would point out that because of the volume of the notices that we sent out, they are actually right now booking the last of my appointments for the last week in April, and we can't go beyond that because the tentative assessment rule will be filed at that time. So I would suggest that if property owners have not made an appointment, and they have a legitimate concern about their assessment and would like to send me information, they can drop it off, and I will do my best to look at it without an appointment, because we are actually going to be turning people away because we're going to be running out of appointments. And other than that...
Thank you. Before I open it up for questions, and what I'd like to do is if, I don't know who's out there that is interested in asking a question, but if it's a specific question that has hopefully a good answer to it, please come up to the microphone. But before we do this, does the board want to make any, anybody on the board want to make any comments?
I just have a couple of questions to ask.
Sure.
Maybe it'll answer some of the people in the audience. So Teresa, the equalization rate that the state comes up with for other towns, how confident are you, and I know you might not even be able to answer this, how confident are you that that makes Lysander not pay more to the county or other services that all the towns use? I mean, do you think that's a pretty accurate guess?
Yes. Yes. The equalization rate is adequate for that. I don't know what, I have a question for the state. I don't know what happens if Clay gets to a negative number. I don't know. You know, and they're not far off that right now. So the equalization rate does an adequate job of, because they're looking at market value and they're dividing that market value into the, you know, into the assessments to come up with the equalization rate. What the equalization rate cannot do, if for whatever reason there are properties that are either overvalued, because values have come down, or they're undervalued because values have gone up, they are not addressed with an equalization rate, because they're looking at the town as a whole. And typically, if you have a really low equalization rate and you haven't done anything in a long time, it's, they're not really analyzing the role in determining which assessments should change and which assessments aren't. So there's two things. The equalization rate is great for equalizing bills and such for county, for school, and those tax rates are impacted because of those equalization rates, as in the example. Full market value is the easiest, this is crazy complicated. I didn't come up with a system. It's the state's system. I just live with it and try to explain it. But the 100% market value is the easiest thing for property owners to understand. You can hide a lot of inequity on an assessment roll if you're fractional assessments, okay? So I hope that helps.
Yeah, no, that's, I've always wondered about it.
So I have a question. So when this bubble bursts, right, and the values go down, will the assessments go down as well too?
Absolutely.
All right.
And the reason for that is, the reason for that is, and we're not talking about one weird sale.
No, I'm talking, yeah, right.
We're talking about being able to measure the level of assessment compared to the sale price. That is all we do every year. It's not out to make more money, it's not out to raise taxes, it's not out about anything. It's comparing those assessments to those sale prices. Market value, where are we, where are the assessments? So if we can measure that values have come down and assessments are higher than the market value or the sale prices, you know, routinely, then that triggers a reevaluation backwards. It actually happened in the town of Lysander back in 2010. The newest houses in Radisson at that point in 2010 were in the $400,000, $500,000 price range at the time. And when we were coming out of the recession, 2010, those houses were not selling. You couldn't give them away. They were on the market forever. Their listing prices ticked down, 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 down before they sold. And no matter how I looked at the numbers, no matter how I turned them and twisted them and looked at those numbers, it indicated to me that those values were 10% too high. Everybody in that entire neighborhood was trended down 10%. They're back up again, and then some, because the market has changed. But that gives you an idea of what we actually do every year. So I encourage the public to try to understand this whole thing, because my fear is that if the town decides, because of, you know, because of the negatives and all of that, not to continue with market value assessments, if we see market value assessments, you know, market values go down, we're stuck up here. If we're not looking at that, then you're stuck up here, and they're not changed. So that's my fear as markets change. If, you know, you got to ride the wave. Otherwise, you know, you may not benefit from the fact that, you know, if and when those values come down, your assessments will do the same thing. Now, will your tax bill come, your tax bill be less? I don't know, because it depends on what they're spending. We're back to that budget and that levy, okay?
I had a couple more questions.
Okay.
I heard you mention residential and commercial. I didn't hear anything about agricultural.
Vacant land?
Yeah.
Okay. To give you an idea, our agricultural, we have, we have probably the most agricultural property in any town of, in Anadaga County, between Lysander and Van Buren. They are what we call property class C, and they are, that's basically vacant land and farmland, field crops, horse farms, you know, all of those. All of their land values this year trended up 10% because their values have gone up as well as residential values have gone up.
Okay. Now, does that have any effect if water runs by the property, whether it's developed or not? I mean, I'm asking because I don't know.
No, because we are assessing, vacant land is a little different. A house is a house. A restaurant is a restaurant, okay? But vacant land has potential. There's nothing on it. But I can't assess, so say a farmer has 50 acres, and zoning requires two acres to build. I can't assess that farmer for 25 building lots, because he's using that vacant land as a farm. So I have to assess that farmland at its use, not at its highest interest use. That's what appraisers do. But assessors with vacant land assess at its current use. So typically, farmers, if they're in the agricultural district, if a water district goes through, they have the option to be excluded from the district, okay? So they're not negatively impacted by that in the creation of the district.
Right.
Okay?
Now, back on February 17th, you did give the town board pretty much a synopsis of what you're giving again, in all the assessment increases.
Pretty close.
And you had said it was an across-the-board increase, roughly for residential, I believe.
Yes, based on market, what is market value, where are the assessments in each neighborhood, each, you know, the rural areas of town, just so you know, the rural areas of town and some of the waterfront, because they're not, I had a lady yesterday say cookie-cutter neighborhood. The rural area of Town Plainville Road, Connors Road, those areas are not what we call cookie-cutter neighborhoods. The houses are very dissimilar. Those were the areas that were reappraised this year. And by reappraised, I mean, we looked at sales of similar properties for each one of those properties in those neighborhoods, in those settings. So an old farmhouse, farmhouse sales. A newer colonial, newer colonial sales. The neighborhoods, because they're more typical, the houses are more similar, they were trended based on a review of the entire neighborhood as a whole, not an individual value. So we measured the town, each neighborhood as a whole, and every property in that neighborhood was adjusted for the difference between market value, sale prices, and assessments. And the average for those neighborhoods is 12 to 14%. Most of them closer to 14, okay?
And the only other, I know, there's a lot of questions. Sorry, well, no, there isn't. I think I just want to, you know, getting back to, if someone wants to grieve their assessment, they can allow you to come in the house, but it's not a requirement. I just want, there are people I've seen where if you grieve, they have access to your house. And I just want you to explain it.
Yeah, no, the law does not allow me access, you know, codes enforcement officers, they have more legal rights. The assessor doesn't have a right to, unless they are invited in, they don't have the legal right to expect entry into a house. I do not, I've had data collectors in the past that walked around properties and peeked in windows. I discourage that, because I don't think it's fair. We don't do that for everyone. So basically, what we do is done from the street, which is, to the deputy supervisor's point, if you have things that we can't see, or things that we may not know about, then we need to share those things. But Grievance Day informals with me is an informal discussion about your assessment and information sharing. your assessment and information sharing of information, and not just assessments. We talk about exemptions in some cases too, so people are learning. Um, but grievance, grievance is, you fill out the form, you tell them, um, what, what your assessment is, what you think it should be and why, and it can be, you know, however you want to take it, but no, by coming to grievance doesn't mean that the grievance board is going to tromp on out and expect to go in the house.
Okay.
They don't have the time, and they don't want to.
And I, you know, I, I've, I've seen comments and people have asked me questions, and I just want to be able to understand
Yeah, no.
that grieving does not give an open, you know, oh, you gotta let it.
Yeah, no, and there, and there's one other point to make. Um, the grievance board cannot raise anyone's assessment that's specified in law, because they didn't want the general public to fear coming into the board and having that grievance board turn around and say, well, geez, I think his assessment's way too, well, let's, let's raise it some more. They can't do that, even if they think they should. Okay?
That, I'm all done with my questions. I want to thank your department. I don't, I don't think people understand the amount of work that goes into this, and it's not something that's taken like that.
Yes, I have a very good team.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to say something that hasn't been said or ask a question that hasn't been asked already, and just in the interest of time tonight? Oh, there's three people that seem to be walking to the microphone.
I was just making a quick statement. Kathy Road, I live at four oh seven Patty Road, Sterling, New York. I own property in the town of Lysander, however. Yes, I'm Kevin's mother.
She was on the Board of Assessment Review. I don't know how this is going.
I've resided in, in Sterling now for almost eighteen years. I've been on the Board of Assessment Review for the town of Sterling for twelve years. I've sailed through many grievances. And this is more to let your, this is something for the taxpayer to think about, not your assessor so much. First of all, when you get that assessment, ask yourself, would you sell your house for that amount of money? Ninety percent of the people are going to tell you, no. They would always want more money than it's assessed for. So, you know, you have to take that, you have to think as a taxpayer, your responsibility to this assessment process. So not just your assessors, you as a taxpayer also have to think about what you want. Also, you, the lower you make your assessment, when you go to sell that house, that person's going to say, oh, you want four hundred thousand dollars, you're only assessed for two hundred thousand. Why would I pay you four hundred? So it does affect sales if you ever go to sell your house, if you have too low an assessment. And also, like she stated earlier, I wanted to just confer, confirm what there is. I consider it a scam, because your school board's already passed their budget before her final assessment role goes in. Her final role isn't due until July first. So the lower her total assessment role, the higher your rate per thousand. The higher her total assess- they're going to get their money no matter what she does, is what I'm telling you. Those budgets are passed, and they're going to come out to your price per thousand to get their money, regardless of whether her role is high or low.
Yep.
It's, it's that simple.
Yep.
At, you know, and, and this is something the taxpayer has to, you know, I don't think a lot of the taxpayers understand. I see them come to grievance all the time with them, and it, I just wanted to let you know, the taxpayer should realize they have a responsibility in this. It's not just the assessor's office. And she can't, she can't mind read. You want to bring her pictures, you want to show or allow her in your house. You, if you really feel you're over assessed, then you should be able to go the extra mile and prove it.
Well, thank you so much.
Okay.
And, and, and to that, and I keep interrupting, but keep your eye on the town budget. Make sure that what we do every year is not crazy from one year to the next. And I can, I've been sitting on this board since 2014, several administrations, some of them might disagree on, on some other things, but by, if you look at our budget, it really hasn't changed significantly, except for, you know, inflationary things. Anybody else want to speak? Rob, were you, oh, I think Rob was next. No, no, that gentleman in the back. If Rob, you already had your chance to speak once, go back again.
I have a list of questions.
All right, state your name.
Tony Van Slyke, Scotch Room Circle and Round. Um, I have a list of questions, but in going through this, you generated a lot more questions, I guess. You know, so you, you talked about the equalization rate. And in generalities, you spoke about the, the, one way or another, the state's going to get you, right, through the equalization rate.
Yeah.
So have you done an analysis to show, I mean, like on the sheet you just gave with all these tax rates?
The tax rates, yeah.
It shows the tax rate went up by, in, in flay by ten or twelve percent over ten or twelve years. Their assessments didn't go up at all. In the town of Lysander, our assessments have gone up, I mean, just in the last two years, twenty-four, twenty-six percent in residential. And our tax rate's gone down. So where's, I don't know which is a better deal.
I don't, I don't know either. I don't, I just.
So why want the town look at that to say, hey, let's leave assessment. Let's study where assessments are today. What will that do to our equalization rate? What will that do to our tax rate? And do the taxpayers win if we do that, or do they lose if we do that?
Um, one point I would like to make that 2010 timeframe, from when the rates that I was looking at, from 2010 through 2022, 2021, there, there, there were increases over those years, but not, not as dramatic of an increase that we've seen this year. So the.
Last year was twelve percent.
Yeah, and, well, in Radisson, you hadn't been done since 2018.
Well, it's still twelve percent.
So, but that was over
So in two years, it was twenty-six percent.
That was over, yeah, you were, that was over a course of three years of, you know, sales, because you hadn't been, Radisson as a group, those neighborhoods hadn't been done since 2018. So you're looking at three years' worth of increase last year. This year, you're looking at one year's worth of increase. And so what I, the point I'm trying to make is, because the values are up so extremely, you know, high in one year's time, roughly, equalization rates are going to drop a lot more than they did in that, that 2010 to the 2021 timeframe, because, just because the values have gone up. And to give you an idea, we would be looking at, um, ten percent would have been a gift, and it, I believe it, based on the numbers, it would have been closer to fifteen in one year.
But if you haven't done this, this formal study on that.
Can I just interrupt?
You don't.
Everybody has to be treated equally. So whether we're at sixty percent, seventy percent, or a hundred percent, the value of your house, you have to ask yourself, is that, is that my house worth at least this much? Because then everybody pays their equal share. If, if the, if we do what Clay does, you're, keep what I said before, keep your eye on the budget of the town.
Absolutely.
And if we need to raise five No, they're not moving parts. If we need to raise five million dollars with a hundred percent assessment or sixty percent assessment, we need to raise five million dollars to run the town. Your taxes are going to go, your, your rate is going to go up.
Right, so you're just talking about town taxes, right? I, I look at all my taxes. I look at my county taxes, I look at my school taxes.
County and the town, the county, I can say that.
So your assessment is affecting my county taxes. It's affecting my school taxes. And I, I totally understand the town, and your claim in all your letters that say your taxes, doesn't mean your taxes are going to go up. Yes, it does.
No.
The town taxes will not go up.
The town and the county operate the same way. What we're all saying is we have no control over the school taxes. And as taxpayers?
But my assessment went up twelve percent last year, and my bottom line taxes went up as well.
All right. Do you have other questions?
Yes, I do.
And, and I, if there's a whole list of them, maybe you can leave them with us, and then, and we'll do our best to, to respond to them.
So now agriculture went up ten percent, residents went up fourteen and a half percent. What did commercial go up?
Commercial, um, commercial, um, actually, um, according to the state, because commercial properties, um, their increase was not as significant, um, commercial properties, um, based on the state's analysis, none of them needed to be done, but a certain number of them were done. Um, and we do that based on, we don't have enough sales in Lysander, we don't have enough commercial properties.
Okay.
Um, and then, um, we don't have enough, um, commercial sales.
So let's say they went up ten percent, same as agriculture.
Um, they, they're done individually, and I haven't looked at the total numbers yet, because I just finished the, you know, the balance.
If it's a blanket of ten percent, so if agriculture went up ten percent, commercial went up ten percent, residents went up fourteen percent, aren't the residential people now taking more of a burden of that tax, that five million dollar tax bill that you spoke of? Because they didn't go up fourteen percent. They only went up.
It's all, it's all based on market value. Market value for residential properties went up more than vacant land. It went up more than commercial properties. It's, it's just a reflection of, of the, um, the market that, that we're living with.
Have you, have, has your group, I'm sorry if I sound combative, but it's, you know?
No, not at all.
Everyone's chasing the consumers' money. Everybody. It's worse than it's ever been, and it used to be fun to spend money, now they're taking money. So I do what I can to protect it.
Just so you know, so are people who sell houses. Okay? They're fighting for every dollar they can get, and that's why the value of the houses keep going up.
Yeah. No, they're not fighting, our people are just traveling in it.
Yeah, they put it in the market, competitive bidding.
I'm on the fence, so. So, so the state gives you, you sent me three pages of what the state sends you, thank you. So the state sends you, and they say, the values in your neighborhood area have gone up fourteen and a half percent. Do you prove out their numbers?
Yes, by each individual neighborhood, yes.
So you force, okay.
Yes. Um, they look at the town as a whole. They look at each property type as a whole. Um, and then I basically have to break that down into, um, what type of property is it? And for residential, it's based on the neighborhood that you're grouped in, um, for, um, location. And also, the neighborhood groupings typically, except out the rural parts of town, are based on the years that the properties were built. So that if you have a new house, I'm looking at new houses. If you, if your house is fifteen years old, I want to look as much as I can at houses that are fifteen years old, so.
So that was my next question, like new houses.
Yeah.
Right? Their pricing's up
Yeah.
probably thirty percent or forty percent because of materials.
Yeah.
Does, had, did that affect my
No.
twenty-five-year-old house?
No, no, not at all.
And then you talked a little bit about next year, two years, three years, hopefully never, market crashes, values are down twenty percent.
Yeah.
What's your timeframe? Will it occur as quickly as last year occurred and this year occurred?
Yeah, bear in mind, two different things that affect that. When the market tanks, it, it typically means that there's less sales than when the market is brisk. Okay? So sometimes it takes me a little longer to get sales, and we are always, almost always, a year, almost a year behind what's happening, whether they're going up or whether they're going down, because our valuation date by law is, um, July first of the previous year. So for this assessment role, for 2022, it's based on July one of 2021, July one of the previous year. And that will help explain why commercial properties haven't gone up as much, because a year of, you know, July one of 2021, we're, we're still dealing with the pandemic, you know, um, you know, restaurants are struggling, they're closed, and, you know, all of the, you know, you know, eviction moratoriums on rental properties. So that's why we haven't seen a huge increase in commercial values, um, because of those extenuating circumstances. Okay?
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rob? I, I want you to get to item C on the agenda, so.
Oh, I wouldn't worry about that.
No, don't, don't worry about item C. So I, I, I wasn't going to, you know, have a dog in his fight, but, you know, I do want to make a comment. Um, my, my concern is really more the timing of the assessment, and just what you just spoke about as far as the year, uh, as far as readjustments. And if you kind of take the global, take a step back and look at the whole global situation, um, we are clearly, I, I'm convinced we're at the top of that bubble, and that bubble is going to burst. The only reason the economy is doing as well, the, the only positive indicator right now in the economy is the fact that we're not in a recession. Interest rates are going to go up. The Fed's going to raise the rates, um, six times, up to two percent, another two percent this year. Um, inflation is out of control. One of the reasons inflation's out of control is that all the money that got thrown into the, the, the economy by the federal government during the pandemic. One of the reasons that housing prices are so high is because the, the border was shut down in Canada, and they couldn't get lumber, and, and builders couldn't get any materials. So that increased the price. All these, this was a once in a, in a millennia, as far as COVID situation. That bubble is going to burst, and I honestly believe, I don't want to be pessimistic, but there are very few positive financial indicators right there that would, you know, indicate the, the opposite. So my, my only concern, there was just a timing to the assessment. Why not wait another year and see what happens? Because we are in something that, that is phenomenally, um, different from anything else that happened in the past fifty years.
Because we can't be arbitrary, Rob. We have to, we have to follow the law, which says full value, and you have to assess it, regardless of what's going on in the, in the outside world. And again.
But you can choose not to do assessment, right?
Well, yes, you can. But then, once, once your assessment role, um, I, I equate it to maintenance on your car. This assessment role was, um, has been maintained for twenty-two years, which means we're looking at market value, we're adjusting for market value as market value has changed. It's maintenance on an assessment role, so this town board in twenty years doesn't have to go buy a new one.
Right.
Because it's not equitable, and we're at a fraction of a percent of market value. And it, it's very expensive to have an outside contractor come in and bring everyone up. Um, the town of Cicero did it a number of years ago. The waterfront was screaming because the waterfront was undervalued, and, you know, the rest of the town was actually carrying them. And they, I believe, have let their assessment role go. And once you lose that, the only way to get it back is to hire an outside contractor and spend that money. So that is, that's why we don't.
You're already saying skip one auto change, though.
Yeah.
Give up on assessments.
He's not saying.
I think that we're at the top of the market.
And I, and I know, and I know my timing is awful, you know, with everything, but the, the laws, and, and, and so, to give you an idea, if we didn't do this, all of those utility values, all those other values that weren't at eighty-five percent or roughly, where the residential properties were, I would have to be reducing them in order to be equitable and fair on the assessment role. Because you can't have one at a hundred percent and, and not.
Right, right. So, but my only comment there is just, you know, recognize the fact that we very well likely will be in a recession.
Yes, and we can back, if we measure that the assessments have gone, you know, the, the values are too, the values have come down, the assessments are too high, your assessments will do the same thing. We're looking at that question.
At least a year gap between reality and when that takes into account, though.
But we're also a year gap almost between how we get up, um, you know, the values.
Yep.
When we're, we're a year behind almost, no matter where the market is going.
Yep.
Okay?
Thanks, thanks, Rob.
Was there anybody else?
Quick to go up, slow to come down.
Do you have a, a three-minute summary, right, Fred?
I'll try to do this in six or seven minutes or so.
No, actually, you'll hold on to two minutes.
Um, so, yeah, you know, it's, I call it the dodge deflect duck game. It's around this assessment time of the year, tax time of the year, budget time of the year. And it's just like, people will come out angry for one meeting, and if we can dodge and deflect and duck, and then they'll go home to their comfortable place, and then we don't got to deal with it for a while. And I think, um, that some of the people that do that are toeing death, and they're not listening to the people in our community. Heck, the greater percentage of our community doesn't even know there's a town board meeting Heck, the greater percentage of our community doesn't even know there's a town board meeting tonight, or wouldn't even know where to go to attend it. When people say, just 'cause your assessment goes up, that doesn't mean your taxes are gonna go up. Every time my assessment's gone up, my tax has gone up. My school tax, my county tax, my fire tax are all tied to my assessment. So if my assessment goes up, but the town stays within their budget or lowers their budget, my, I'm still paying more taxes, even though I'm not paying it at the town level. And like a few of the gentlemen have said, our dollars are being taken from every direction. Well, if we knew where we could go and stand in front of the president or in front of our governor and grieve like we are right now, we would. I would hope that this board would look at the budget the way a business looks at its model, or a home looks at its model. I'm gonna give you an example of my model. Like, I still make the same amount of money I did before. Even if you're working two jobs, you can't really go out and get a third because your money goes up. So when you go to the store and stuff costs more, instead of buying that $6 Mama Casa's stuffed crust pizza at Aldi's, I buy the $3 regular pizza one, and that makes up for what the milk went up, the eggs went up, the sugar went up, but I stay within my budget. I don't go out and buy more. So I'm asking this town, who's elected, and who appoints an assessor, and who appoints pretty much every other position, to look at our town the way a homeowner would look at their budget. And sometimes, back in the days when my parents had tough times, and we couldn't afford hamburger or whatever, we bought bologna. And the last thing I wanna say is, I appreciate what Kevin's mom said. But there's people on the other side of the equation that wish they could get for their home what their assessment is. And I'm gonna give you a specific example. I had to be in a piece of property that butted up to the house that I live in now. When the previous owner owned that house, it was assessed at $57,000. He had it for sale for $100,000 for five years. Nobody bought it. The bank took it away from him. They had an auction there one day, and 47 people came to bid on that house, me being one of them. The highest other homeowner besides me bid it up to $35,000. There was the residential, or the real estate guy from Kato, I forget his name, it escapes me right now.
Dean Cummins.
Dean.
Dean Cummins. He bid me up to $47,000. So 47 people were there. The price of the house went up to $47,000, but it had been assessed at $57,000 for the previous. He couldn't, look at all the people, they're trying to buy it, and it's still not getting what it was assessed at for so long. And so there's people on that other side of the equation, and I just want this board to stay within its means. And sometimes you'd look at other townships and you say, oh, well, jeez, I see that they're paying this much for this department or this position. And I think that's a bad way of looking at things. I think if you wanna fill a position, you should advertise, this is what the town is looking for. Have as many, advertise it all over so you have as many people come in as you can. Look at their credentials, decide on which are the two or three top, and take a vote on it. And, and now you're getting more of a talent pool. And you might be able to advertise it within this money freight. And I bet you see people that are talented willing in to come and take that amount of money, as opposed to, let's go through a political organization to pick somebody that we know and put them on, and they might not have all of the credentials, and they're just gonna take what has been handed out before. And that's not how a business or a home operates when they're already working one and a half or two jobs. And thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Burge.
And I just wanna say, you know, the school board, the fire district, the county have public meetings where the public can go and hold them accountable for their tax rates and what their budgets are. So don't be afraid to take this to the school board, to take it to the county lunch, or to the county executive, and, you know, the fire district. And those meetings are as poorly attended as most parks.
I want to thank everybody for their comments. Hopefully, they, they were helpful for the folks that were in this room attending live, as well as the folks who will be watching this on PACB TV. And I really appreciate hearing from everybody, I do. And it's a, it's not, the book is not being shot, so if there's any more comments or questions, you know, make sure you get them into the town supervisor or the tax assessors office and, or any one of us board members, we're more than happy to review them. With that, we're gonna be moving on to regular agenda items. And I'd like to introduce, if I can get a motion to authorize the town supervisor to sign the cover sheet and BSP-5 form for the revised River Grove subdivision Phase 2 contract drawings as recommended in the town engineer's letter dated April 7, 2022.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna move on to number B, bit number, letter B. Can I get a motion to accept the 2022 pavement management plan as submitted by the highway superintendent?
I'll move it. I'll second it.
If there's any discussion, I, I, the only thing I would like to say is I'm really impressed with Al and our new highway superintendent Ken for putting this together. It's, I think it's in the packet out there. Those are the roads that are, and, and other things that are gonna be worked on in 2022. The only negative about that is when we put that budget together, and in terms of tightening our belts, you know, we're spending 800, what is it, $980,000. That was gonna buy a lot more last, last summer and fall when we put this budget together. But with inflation and the cost of petroleum products and asphalt products, we're gonna be doing less. And you can thank anybody except for the folks in this room for making that happen in terms of inflation. So are there any other questions or comments on that pavement management plan? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Letter C. Can I get a motion to authorize the town supervisor to sign the life-worth-living 5K special event license that we heard before?
I'll move it. I'll second it.
Uh, any discussion on that? Okay, hearing none? Can I get a vote on that? Uh, what was in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Item D. Can I get a motion to authorize the town supervisor to sign the Onondaga County Planning Board Exemption Agreement, exempting certain actions of the town's planning, zoning, site plan, and subdivisions be exempt from the Onondaga County Planning Board referral requirements?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
I think this is an outstanding move by the county. It's basically delegating back to the town things that we know how to, how best to do for ourselves, and saying you don't have to send those things to us for review. Tony, is there anything else you wanna add?
No, I just think it's a good move on for both county and the town to eliminate a lot of unnecessary.
Exactly. With that, can I get a vote? Those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item E. Can I get a motion to authorize the town supervisor to sign the agreements with Bonadeo and Company LLP for professional consulting services in the amount of $340 per hour on a monthly basis?
I'll move it. I'll second it.
What I know about this is we have hired our own comptroller, but in addition to the work that that person is doing, that Bonadeo is a, is a back, back support for that, for that, for that office, and especially in this transition from, with that person really getting to know what we're doing here, and I don't know if anybody else has any comments?
Don't we have Dave Rowley as well?
We have, I think Dave is available.
He's mostly for the budget.
Yeah.
So what is this for? I, I'm confused, because I thought we already signed an agreement with the Bonadeo group a couple months ago.
I think this.
And now, why are we coming back to this?
Audit scope services.
What was that?
Audit scope services for audits of special district problems. This is the Lady District audit and.
Lady District, right.
Yeah.
Is there a lot of issues with it?
There's some work there.
Okay.
I have a question on this. I, I happened to look at the proposal that, that's posted, and it, it looked like it was posted at $175 an hour blended rate, 340.
Where do you, where do you see that?
I, when I looked online, I happened to.
It's on page three, it's $340 per hour on a monthly basis. That's the contract that I have in front of me.
But, I mean, isn't this in the realm of what we just hired our comptroller to do as well? I mean.
I, I believe what we did was, because our comptrollers knew we wanted Bonadeo to, to be there as a backfill until she got her feet completely, until she ran the town for a year, until she figured out every aspect of the town.
This is not gonna be on a regular basis.
No, I know, but, so David's not even gonna be up the elbow to help instead of paying the street 40.
I think David is coming back, budget time. I don't think he's gonna come back to do the other stuff, as far, as far as I know.
Last time I talked to David, he was glad to finally be truly retired. I mean, he tried to retire for a long time.
300 an hour. Under the table.
We probably can't take that bit.
We didn't care.
I'm just letting you know.
First.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Item F. Can I get a motion to appoint William Brotherton and Walter Virginia each as park attendants with an hourly rate of $13.20 per hour effective April 8, 2022 through October 31, 2022?
I'll move it. I'll second it.
Any questions? Any discussion? Hearing none? Can I get a vote to affirm that? Aye, okay. Item G. Can I get a motion to accept the resignation of David Sitar as laborer in the Parks and Recreation Department as a resignation letter on file?
I'll move it. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Item H. Can I get a motion to appoint Todd Chrysler as security for future court dates and board meetings at an hourly rate of $40 per hour with a three-hour minimum?
I'll move it. I'll second it.
All those in favor, well, any questions? Okay, hearing none? All those in favor?